I don't know.
Jeff said, "Saw her." Yep, walking in.
Pentle, Pentle's on smoke.
If we could call to R. and say, "Pledge of Allegiance, please."
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll do roll call. Larry, Jean, Tori, Jeff, Lisa, Peggy, and Kevin is not here. If I could get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Second.
Okay, we don't have any patron comments tonight, so if, do we have any standing committee reports?
Well, I'll talk about the, we had a board advocacy committee meeting. We took a look at what we think are the bills of most, drawing most attention, and the ones that came out, obviously, are Senate Bill 55, House Bill 349, House Bill 543, and the Mayfair work. It's several others. Moving forward, what we're planning on doing is meeting after the April, on April 29th, and we'll meet May 20th. And at that time, we'll start to look at what we want to put together in terms of board recommendations or priorities for October, when we present to the board based upon what we're going to see at the end of this session, and anything that comes up in the summer. Jeff, Jean, anything you'd want to add?
Oh, no, I just, I think that it's, it's going to eventually evolve into something that's really helpful for the community once they are aware of legislative, things that are happening legislatively that could affect our district. So, I, you know, we're going to kind of do a slow roll on this, and, you know, particularly with the situ, the school year being the way it's been this year, we're going to kind of ease into it and, you know, probably go full bore next year.
Yeah, especially since there's a lot of momentum with stuff going on right now. I think we need to watch and see what happens, and then use that as a guide to proceed into actually going into the next legislative session with a good committee behind us.
Okay. Thank you all for putting that committee together and doing that work. Lisa, did you have anything, or? Nope. Tori?
Nope.
And same here. Okay. Number five, action items by consent. If I could get a motion to approve action items A through G?
Can we pull G from that?
Yes, we can. Anybody else? If I could get a motion, please, to approve 5A through F?
I'll make a motion. Second?
Okay, so, action item 5G, approval of copy machine bid?
I just thought to pull it since it was a large amount, so we could vote on it separately.
I think we need to vote. We need to vote on that motion.
Oh, like an all in favor?
All in favor? Okay, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry. Okay, so, action item 5G?
Yeah, I just thought, with it being a five-year cumulative amount of $1.2 million, that it would be worthwhile just to vote on it separately. I, you know, I think it looks good, but I just thought it would be good to acknowledge that separately. Where, it's the current vendor we're using, it says, and they submitted the lowest bid. So, the annual cost is two, $256,000, $256,000, or $470,000. I can't even say my numbers, but you guys are watch, looking at it.
Right, and it's a five-year contract, I assume? So, does anybody have any questions that they need answered on that? No?
No.
Okay. So, if I could get a motion to approve action item 5G, approval of copy machine bid?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to number six, governance?
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm up here hoping to get five new buses tonight. And I looked at it, and just to give you guys an example, I know I used in the document I provided about type C and type D buses. Well, that bus right there, just as an example, is a type D bus. And the type C is just like your regular, normal school buses, got the engine in the front, just in case. But I would recommend, you know, I'm asking for five buses, four from Central States, all of our fleet. There's 104 buses, they're all from Central States, they're all Bluebirds. And looking at the other bid from Thomas, that it would increase our costs over the life of the bus, and the various reasons I gave, so, just asking for some buses. Any questions?
Could you just explain the difference of between the two styles of buses?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
On that, on that type D, if you notice, the wheels are behind the driver, so it gets a better turning radius. And basically, they're all 71 passengers, it's just, in, looking in cul-de-sacs around the district, and some of the tight turns, that that one works a little bit better than the other bus, so.
So, it's same car?
No, they're all the same.
Okay. Anybody have any questions beyond that? No? All right. If I could get a motion to purchase five buses from Central State's bus in the amount of $504,340?
I make a motion that we purchase five buses from Central State's bus in the amount of $504,340.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, B, consider roof bids?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I solicit bids for some roof work. For John Carey, Beasley, Blades, Order, Oakville Middle, and Melville High School. Currently, the, our consultant is finalizing the project details on the replacement for the pool, which is included for this year, so hopefully, they'll get that finished, and I'll be back next month to consider that one. But tonight, I would like to move forward. And the lowest qualified bidder for Beasley and John Carey, Beatty Roofing, in the amount of $353,523, which includes permits, professional and contingency fees. You want me to read them all, or you want me to do it individually?
Do we need to vote on them individually, or as a package?
No, let's just do them all.
You want a package?
Yeah.
Okay. And Beatty Roofing for Oakville Middle, for the cost of $378,305, which includes professional contingency fees. Barch Roofing for Blades Elementary, Order, for $246,568, which includes permits, professional and contingency fees. And Barch Roofing for Melville Senior High, for $75,743, which includes permits, professional and contingency fees.
I just realized, I don't have a total figure.
What's that?
I just realized there's no total down there.
Oh, I got the total here, if you want it.
So, I just do have one question about it.
Yes.
Are the three roof replacements for Beasley, or, excuse me, the four for Beasley, John Carey, Oakville, and Blades, are those total replacements, or just partial replacements?
They're all partial, all the buildings are partial.
And then the one for Melville is obviously less work?
Partial too, yeah. You don't want to be a whole, roof would be the pool, once we get that, once we get that bid.
Okay, that's the only question.
I think the total is like 906... I do not have that. Is it right over a million?
906788, maybe? It's in the...
Is it in the first page?
It's, yeah, it's in the bid review?
Bid review.
Okay. All right. So, if I could get, does anybody else have any questions? No. If we could get a motion to approve the roof bids?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Roof bid approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go over just a few of the key revenues that we have as we develop our budget. Sort of a gray picture right now, because we don't really have the full story on, on most of these items. So, it'll be fairly quick. I don't have a lot of detail data. But I think, rather than focusing on the specific numbers, I would focus more on just the formula and the format of how we arrive, because eventually, the numbers will change, but the format and the formula still stays the same. So, the first thing is, our largest revenue is the local tax. It's around $76, $77 million in total. There's four key factors that we go look at, two, four main factors that we look at to determine the revenue. So, you're looking at assessed value, you're looking at new construction, the Consumer Price Index of inflation, and then the collection percentage. This first page is a table, and it really just shows a history of the current, or the assessed values, year by year. I think one thing of interest, first of all, this is a reassessment year, it's an odd year. Every odd year is reassessment, every even year is non-reassessment. So, typically, when you get your bigger movements, it's on a reassessment year, whether it's down or up. I think it's sort of interesting, when you look at 2008, on the total assessed value, at $1,884, you have to go until 2019 before you surpass the 2008 total. So, it shows you there were some pretty lean years, and it took a long time to gain that ground back. But anyway, once again, we don't have all of the data. We just got data in from the county as a preliminary number, and then we'll get another preliminary update in July, and then a final update in September on assessed value. It looks like our value is going up around 10.4% on the first look. The Consumer Price Index is 1.4%, that won't change, that's an actual known number. So, I think one of the, it's sort of confusing, the way this whole calculation works, but note number two down there is a very helpful note to show you roughly how the calculations sort of work. And if you look at the third line item on note two, that says if the assessed value is greater than the CPI inflation percentage, then your tax rate decreases ultimately. You get to capture all of your inflation, so we can capture the 1.4% of inflation, but any assessed value increase of more than the 1.4% inflation just pushes your tax rate down to neutralize it, so that ultimately, you're at the 1.4%. Plus, you get new construction, so there's a few, you know, a few extra footnotes to that calculation. So, bottom line is, back when I put this together, we did not know that data from the county. That's just fresh. So, this was just a scenario, really just to walk you through the formula. These are not final numbers. And then the final thing is the collection percentage. This current year, being a COVID down year, we budgeted a lower collection percentage. Right now, it's around 95.2%, and we'll probably get back to more normal 97% next year, which will help considerably. So, that's really just the general format, and then, of course, we have the election on April 6th, and that will determine whether or not we have a debt service levy that would then be offset with a voluntary reduction. Those are mechanical issues on how you fill out the form. So, that's really where we stand on taxes. We don't, we don't have a final number. Then on basic formula, once again, this is, you know, really the formula, that, or the format. We start off with the WADA. The WADA that I've, I'm showing, as we get a little bit closer look at summer school estimates, that WADA number might go up somewhat. But bottom line is, you're taking your WADA, you're multiplying that by the SAT, the state adequacy target, and that's determined by DESI. So, we don't have any DESI guidance on that. So, once again, this is, this is format you can look at, but the number will change. We're waiting on DESI guidance from that. You got a dollar value modifier, that's purchasing power within different regions across the state. And then you've got the funding percentage, which, once again, that's dependent on DESI. So, this is sort of a nice, you know, way of presenting the format and the calculation, but we don't really have numbers until we get further guidance from DESI. I think the biggest thing is just understanding that summer school does have a pretty large impact. Last year's summer school ADA was 95, and right now, this shows a projection of 175. It could even be more than that. For every additional person over 95, every additional ADA, that's about $7,000 revenue. So, if we end up with, say, 225 ADA, the difference between 225 and 95, we were paid based on 95 this current school year. So, anything over 95 is an increase of revenue. And so, with potentially having two sessions of June and July, that, that can be a lot of money. Then we move on to sales tax, and it's sort of the same picture. I put in a number on that fiscal year '22 line item of $1,040 per WADA, but that's just a number. It's just, you know, it's just a guess. That number will be driven by DESI at some point later this spring. And you take the per WADA number that DESI is going to throw out at some point, you multiply it by the prior year WADA, which right now, we're estimating to be the 9571 number. And that's how you get your revenue over in the other column of $9.9 million. So, right now, this is just a format, you can see the history, but until we get DESI guidance, we really don't know what we're dealing with on the per WADA. It gives us a rough idea. Then the final item is VIC, that is a known, more of a known number. We had, we had less students than what we're estimating this current year. So, VIC pays on a one-year lag. Basically, you estimate what you're going to have this year, and that's what they pay you on. So, we estimated a certain number, we got less than that. So, they're basically overpaying us. That results in a true-up next year of probably around $170,000, along with the annual reduction, because the program is declining in enrollment. So, every year, we get less revenue to begin with, and on top of that, we've got $170,000 true-up. Bottom line is, it looks like about $600,000 less revenue than what we have this current school year. So, that, that is one number that's going to be fairly, fairly accurate. And other than that, that's really all I have right now for, those are the key revenues. These revenues make up over 80% of our total revenue. So, if you know what's going on with these items, you really know a lot of the picture. It's just that we don't have the data yet, it's a little early this year, and so, we just don't have the precise data. It's really all I have for tonight, so are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to 6D, consider region seven nomination for MSBA Board of Directors. Does anybody have any discussion, or want to?
Let me make a couple of comments. There are 17 MSBA regions, and each one has a representative, along with representatives from St. Louis, Jefferson, Springfield, Kansas City, and K-8, and the four officers. When I requested this to be put on here, at that time, there was nobody in the region who had stepped forward to run for the position. Couple days ago, I had a chance to talk with a couple of folks, and I have one person from a, a board with good experience in working in the, in the regional team, who's been nominated. So, I'm not going to ask for any action, because I think, not only will he do a really good job, but it's, I think, important to have new voices continue to come into that board. I served on that Board of Directors for eight years, four years as an officer, and four years as just a representative. So, no action is needed, and we'll let his nomination move forward.
Who, who is it? Who was nominated?
It's Kevin Raberberg from down Brentwood.
From where?
Excellent, excellent choice.
Where is he from?
Brent.
Brentwood.
Oh, okay.
And what happens, just out of curiosity, if there are more than one nominee?
Then, then on the 29th, when we have our, our virtual regional meeting, then there'll be a vote. If not, it'll just pretty much be an acclamation.
Okay. So, no action taken on, on region seven nomination? Thank you. And we didn't have any patron comments on non-agenda items, but I would like to mention that I think we owe a ton of kudos to all of those involved in getting the vaccination clinic tomorrow for all of our staff. I know Dr., I know Dr. Gaines and all the other administrators were driving forces, but I, our lead nurse, Jennifer Ahern, really, really pushed it to the finish line, from what I understand. So, thank you, thank you to her. This is a giant leap towards recovery for everybody, so, good job.
Yeah.
And if I could now get, did anybody else have anything? Nothing? If I could get an authorization of closed session?
Motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of the same and other items under the Missouri revised statute 610.021, subsections 1... subsections 1 through 22, and 610.022, subsections 1 through 6, legal action, causes of action or litigation, lease, 610.0211, purchase or sale of real estate, 610.0212, and preparation for negotiations with employee groups, 610.0219. Uh, Larry?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Sorry, Jean, I skipped you.
That was she looking at you.
Yes.
Mixing it up for Sue today.
I get a good.
Jeff?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Tori, yes?
Okay. Authorization?